Harding, Johnson, Melton.
Here.
Rowe. All right. Festerson is absent.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Johnson.
Have a seat. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to talk a little bit about building a responsible community safeguarding children from the juvenile justice system. Today, as your city council representative, I would like to discuss a critical topic that has far-reaching implications for our community's future. The significance of community accountability in fostering healthy child development and preventing their involvement in the juvenile justice system. In an era of growing challenges, it is crucial for us to unite as a responsible community to safeguard our children's well-being. One, nurturing a supportive environment. Children thrive in environments where they feel supported, loved, and connected. A strong community provides a safety net that helps children cope with the challenges, reducing the likelihood of engaging in delinquent behavior. When children have a positive role models and access to guidance, they are more likely to make responsible choices. Two, early intervention and prevention. Proactive community engagement allows us to identify children at risk of entering the juvenile justice system early on. By addressing underlying issues such as family problems, substance abuse, and school difficulties, we can intervene before these issues escalate into criminal behavior. Prevention is more effective and economical than rehabilitation. Three, education and empowerment. Communities that prioritize education provide children with the tools to succeed in life. Access to the quality education empowers children to pursue their dreams, equipping them with skills that open doors to the legitimate opportunities. An educated child is less likely to fall into the traps of criminal activity. Four, restorative justice practices. Promoting restorative justice over punitive measures encourages children to make responsibility for their actions while making amends to those affected. This approach fosters empathy, accountability, and growth, reducing the likelihood of repeat offenses and ingraining a sense of community responsibility. Five, building strong social networks. Communities that prioritize social interactions and engagement create networks that act as a safety valve for children facing adversity. These networks provide emotional support and alternatives to negative influences, reducing the allure of criminal involvement. Six, collaborative approach. Effective community accountability involves collaboration between families, schools, law enforcement, local organization, and policymakers. Together, we can create a comprehensive system of support that addresses the root causes of juvenile delinquency and enforces a sense of belonging. In a nutshell, the development of our children is a collective responsibility. By fostering a nurturing environment, intervening early, providing education and empowerment, embracing restorative justice, and building strong social networks, we can guide our children away from the pitfalls of the juvenile justice system. Let us work together to create a resilient community that not only prevents juvenile delinquency, but also paves the way for a brighter future for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. So, good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Madam Clerk?
Just real quick, too. An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers. Item six, to consider a classy liquor license for African Cocktail Lounge located at 7215 Blundo Street.
We'll open the public meeting on agenda item number six. Are there any proponents? Ma'am, can you hear us? I think she's on mute. Okay. We're trying to unmute you right now. There we go.
Okay.
All right, we can hear you. We just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Coco Davis. The name of the business is African Cocktail Lounge. It's on 7215 Blundo Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
All right, and you're here to answer any questions?
If you ask me any question, I can answer.
Okay. Are there any other proponents?
No.
Are there any other proponents in the room here? All right, seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Sir? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Begley.
Thanks, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion if we could lay this over until August the 29th. I spoke to Council President Festerson, who's out of town moving his daughter back to college, and he'd like more time to reach out and address some issues that came up on this. So I'd like to lay it over until the 29th of August if that's doable on the calendar.
All right, we'll close the public meeting. Entertain the motion. Is there a second? And ma'am, did you understand what Councilman Begley? He just asked to lay this over for another week so that we can gather some more information. I think we received some emails from some opponents, and I think they would like the opportunity to maybe reach out and discuss that with you over the next week.
That's fine.
Okay. Is there a second? Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items seven through 10 can be considered together for Arbor View located northwest of 200 and 10th Street and Grand Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven and eight, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 10, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
We'll open the public meeting on agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Voel with E&amp;A Consulting Group here on behalf of Charleston Homes, the applicant for this project. This is the last phase of a single-family development. This particular phase is located southwest of 200 and 10th and Fort Street, contains 108 single-family homes. The target date for actual home construction would be spring of 2024. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 11 through 14 can be considered together for Avante located northwest of 195th Street and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 11 and 12, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item 13, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 14, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
We'll open the public meeting on agenda items 11, 12, 13, and 14. And proponents, please.
Madam Chairman, Brent Beller, 11440 West Center Road, on behalf of the developer, Falcone Land Development. So with me today, it's also Kyle Voel with E&amp;A, the engineer on this project. So this is taking us out to 204th and Fort Street. You can kind of see, this is our project right here. This is the final plat. This image actually shows some of the gradient, the streets coming in here. So 272 single-family residential lots with this project. We're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that would like to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. We'll close the public meeting. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 15 through 18 can be considered together for Calarosa West located northeast of 216th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 15 and 16, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item 17, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 18, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
We'll open the public meeting on agenda items 15, 16, 17, and 18. And proponents?
Thank you. Brent Beller, 11440 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant, Falcone Land Development. Kyle Voel, engineer in this project as well. So this is actually Phase Three of the Calarosa development. So this is 204th. We're moving a little west from our last project. This was Phase One. This was Phase Two. This land right in here, this is now Phase Three. And don't worry, Phase Four is coming in the future, which is just to the north. So final plat, here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Close the public meeting. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Kennedy Square West Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3005 and 3006 Emmett Street in an amount up to $473,486.
We'll open the public meeting on agenda item 19. Are there proponents?
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. The Kennedy Square West TIF project is located on two parcels along North 30th Street near Emmett. It's part of the overall redevelopment of the Spencer Homes Public Housing Project. The northern parcel is currently a surface parking lot. It will be demolished and reconstructed as a nicely landscaped code-compliant parking lot, surface parking lot. The main project site, it's a south lot, which is currently occupied by the vacant Martin Luther King Jr. Building. The site will be cleared, and the building will be replaced with a new four-story mixed-use building. There will be a total of 39 affordable apartment units. This is a Lytech-funded project. That's low-income housing tax credits, so that assures affordability on the rental rates. The first floor will have some micro-retail spaces totaling about 4,000 square feet. They're intended primarily for neighborhood service types of uses, possibly some nonprofits as well. The developer is Bryn Shore Development LLC. They're represented here today by Bill Lucash. This project represents an investment in North Omaha of about $17.7 million. The TIF support requested is $473,486. This project is a good land use for the area, puts a vacant property back into productive use, complies with our master plan, has been approved by the TIF Committee and the City Planning Board, and we now ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hello, Bill Lucash, Bryn Shore Development, 903 South 184th Avenue Circle. I don't know, Don and I are on the same webpage, same wavelength because he always says exactly what I was going to say, but if you don't mind, I have a statement. Kennedy Square West is a 39-unit mixed-income, mixed-use development located at 30th and Emmett Streets. The apartment building will be located on the southwest corner of that intersection. Across the street to the north, as Don said, will be a parking lot that serves the apartment complex. This housing development has nine one-bedroom units, 27 two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. Twenty-seven of the 39 units are affordable units. In this case, affordable means units that are reserved for households earning 60% area median income or less. Some units are reserved for Spencer Homes residents who wish to return to the neighborhood. As Don said, there is also flex space on the ground floor for small businesses or startup businesses. The property will be managed by the Selden Company. Just a couple of quick notes. We anticipate, once the property is built, there will be two full-time jobs for basically property management and oversight. We estimate about 35 construction jobs created or retained during construction process. The flex space may have some job creation potential as well, depending on who would be located in there or which organizations, I would say. We did have one contractor outreach event already on May 3rd of 2023, and we're planning on a second one in September, mid-September of 2023, to make sure that we are reaching out to subcontractors who would like to participate in this process. Sampson is the general contractor for this project, and they have been very open and forward-thinking, and they're wanting to reach out to all subcontractors, so I appreciate that. We have engaged neighbors adjacent to the development. Over the last couple of months, they've had some concerns about the amount of traffic on Emmett Street, what this might mean to that. We've talked to them. Privacy fences around the property, which we will build, to reduce the amount of headlights and just noise, not noise, excuse me, but just busyness on the site that might be distracting to their single-family homes. So we have reached out to neighbors, you know, and I don't know what else to say about it at this time. I think it's a great reuse of the property. It's been in our plans since 2019 for the North 30th Street Transformation Plan. This project supports the City of Omaha's master plan, the housing element of the master plan, the consolidated plan, the affordable furthering... No, I'm sorry. The affordable housing plan, I forgot the name of it, sorry, Greg. And of course, the 2023 Action Plan. So thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the project. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. We'll close the public meeting. Councilwoman Johnson, your light is on.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the Planning Department and the developer for this exciting project that will be built in District 2. It's well overdue. Looks like you guys have done a well-thought-out plan, something that we can model for future developments throughout the district there and throughout Omaha as a whole. So I just want to acknowledge your efforts, the outreach that you've done in the community, outreach you've done with the contractors, and all of that is definitely going to make an impact to the community as far as reducing the amount of poverty that we have here in the City of Omaha. Thank you very much. I'll be supporting this, that I will make a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve the MH Landing Lot 1 Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3401 South 72nd Street in an amount up to $581,976.
We'll open the public meeting on agenda item 20. Proponents, please.
Hi, yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. The MH Lot 1 Landing Project is located at 3401 South 72nd Street. This is really one piece of an overall larger redevelopment of the larger Ramada Inn Cocoa Keys site. This project will redevelop a vacant one-acre parcel with a one-story commercial building. It's a site plan there. It will have two commercial retail bays, be about 6,500 square feet. The bays are pre-leased by national tenants. They have not been identified for us, but anyway, they've been pre-leased. Project will have about 69 parking stalls on the site. The investment in this project is about $3.6 million. The TIF support is $581,976. And again, this project has been approved by the TIF Committee, the City Planning Board, complies with our master plan, and is an appropriate land use for the area. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Thank you, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant, MH Ozone. The only thing I wanted to touch on in addition to what Don did was, this was the former Cocoa Keys Resort Hotel. It's interesting, a nice little case study in TIF in the sense that Cocoa Keys has kind of run its useful life. With the utilization of TIF, this entire district has been able to redevelop into new uses. So this lot to the north of us, that was TIF. This is an office building, that was TIF. Here's another hotel that's office. You have, we didn't do this project, but to the east of it is mixed-use, I'm sorry, multifamily housing. They also utilize TIF. And then last but not least, this is going to be a retail use. So lots of mixed uses in a very important part of our city, the 72nd and I-80 corridor gets a lot of traffic. So, and also, this was a dental office. Again, they use TIF. But again, TIF allows us to rehab these developments. Forty-five new jobs, in addition to 75 construction jobs, go along with these sorts of uses. So TIF is a great incentive for our city. I'm glad that we're able to use it, and we appreciate your support, and here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that would like to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I'm basically generally opposed to most TIF projects because I don't think we're transparent enough about it. Now, I've been in Omaha for quite a few years, and I used to drive around there, and I still do, and I, for the life of me, can't figure out how that area got blighted and how none of this development that's been going on there for quite a few years, new development, would not happen if not for TIF. To me, and I do have a college degree, by the way, common sense says there's somebody giving something away, and somebody's benefit fitting. Now, it's not often, explain clear enough is what I'm getting at. I'm not really stupid, but this flow chart showed up today, these diagrams, trying to explain TIF. But the whole problem is, there's nothing about citizens in here. There's diagrams and say when TIF starts and finishes, but it doesn't say who's actually paying the taxes during that period of 15 to 20 years. And then the school system gets the higher property taxes from the developer or whoever got the break at the end of that 15 years, but not during that 15 years because they got froze at the property values that was probably blighted just before they made the deal. You know, that's the way it seems, only because there's a lack of transparency in all of these discussions. I'm not going to flip through all of them, just a few of them, but your green chart, blue and green chart doesn't say anything about citizens' taxes. It implies that the community partners are everybody but citizens. Doesn't tell us who the community partners are. MH Landing used to be Marriott Hotels. How much of that, is that the name of the subdivision? I don't know. But a lot of developments you've approved over the last couple of years are MH Landing. Everybody's cashing in, and now it looks like there's one, maybe small business, that's getting a building? Or did he used to have a building and it's been demolished so that he can have a new one, a larger one? Seems to me that was on the agenda not too long ago. So, you know, rather than trying to snow us with these again, that's never been clarified, let's have a full debate as to what happens to the citizen's taxpayers during that 15 to 20-year period. Now, developers finance it somehow, bonds, but don't they go back in and buy the bonds? The city partners buy the bonds, so they're getting a break one way or another. But you forget, you do not deny, but you've never refused the idea that homeowners in that area and business owners in that area are going to pay the higher taxes from day one of the approval. Nobody's ever said that. I'd like you to prove that I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Andrew Adams, 2301 South 33rd Street. On the map, that is in District 4, is number one in my heart. And I want to qualify my comments by saying I'm not necessarily an opponent to this application, but I think there are some actionable items that the applicant should address and the city council should hear before voting. The first item, Section 6 of the application, mandatory criteria. The applicant states the project is located in a blighted area and lies within the boundaries of the TIF community redevelopment area. From Don Stenton, we have an inter-office communication, extremely blight discussion. The project site is not located in an extremely blighted area. Additionally, the project is not located in an urban core redevelopment area. There's some further analysis here that says the projects that consist of single-use retail structures and that do not address other master plan goals are generally not considered a good use of tax increment financing and not explicitly supported by the master plan. I'd also like to point out the date on that form, June 14th, because two weeks later, the analysis has changed, and now the project site is located within a community redevelopment area and qualifies for the utilization of tax increment financing. So we need to account for those two weeks, what happened over the course of those two weeks. The next item I wanted to discuss is the zoning application. I read through the entire package here, and the word hotel only comes up one time. It's currently zoned as a community commercial district, which hotels certainly go along with that. This is also from Mr. Stenton. The land use and zoning, a request to rezone the site to neighborhood business district with the planned unit redevelopment overlay was considered and approved by the Planning Board at their May 3rd public hearing, and I'm trying to figure out why. Hotel is not in the permitted uses for a neighborhood business district. I meant to print the form, but it's Section 55-383. However, there are hotels allowed for conditional uses within a neighborhood business district. My question to the applicant is, do they receive a property tax benefit from this rezoning? Now, I'd like to move to the return on investment. The applicant states... The applicant states that, and a lot of this is boilerplate, "As shown on the return investment analysis, it's reasonable conclude that this development would not occur in this area without TIF, given the construction costs and complexities involved." Here's Mr. Stenton with the communication. Return on investment without TIF is 4.44 percent. Return on investment with TIF, 8.37 percent. I did do some math, feel free to check my numbers. I would be the first to say that these are modest returns, but they are returns. So, my question to the applicant would be, is it really reasonable to conclude that this development would not occur without TIF? It was also brought up that this was the site of a former hotel, so I would have some concerns about the success of this development going forward. How does the applicant ensure, with the use of taxpayer resources, that this host, that this hotel will succeed where the Ramada failed? Keeping in mind that there are multiple hotels within a close proximity, there's the Doubletree and the True by Hilton, literally next door. I want to close by saying that if the applicant can help fill in some of the color of this picture, it's certainly reasonable to approve the application. If not, I think it should be taken into consideration by the City Council. A few weeks back, maybe a month or so ago, Councilwoman Johnson asked, "Why do people get upset with TIF?" And in my opinion, and in conversations I have within my community, it's these discrepancies that lead to the angst. I believe that TIF is a valuable tool for this city. I want to see it used going forward, particularly in District 4, and I look forward to the applicant's response. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? All right. I think, does the applicant want to come up and maybe try and address some of those?
Absolutely.
And then I'll allow the, the city to address the things that were mentioned about the city.
Absolutely. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant. Great questions, and let's use this opportunity to maybe clear up some confusion that I think we all hear every time there's a TIF deal. Number one, only the developer pays the property taxes associated with TIF. Only the developer pays the property taxes associated with TIF. Nobody else. Nobody outside, no other neighbors, nobody. Only the property owner pays their, pays their property taxes on TIF. There's nobody else paying them. No one else is getting taxed for this. It's only the developer who does the TIF application that pays the property taxes associated with TIF. Those property taxes are paid by the developer. There is a base level, and there's an incremental level. The, the amount of taxes paid from the base level to the incre, to the new taxing level go back to the developer. The base level taxes, the developer always pays, and the various taxing jurisdictions get them. The big one, OPS. OPS is always getting their property taxes based upon the base level taxation. There's nobody not getting their tax revenue from a TIF project, ever, in the state, Omaha, any, any jurisdiction in our state. It's always the same. Number two, I, the state statute lays all of this out as to how TIF works both in our city and every other taxing municipality, community redevelopment agency, any agency in the state of Nebraska that implements TIF follows the same statutory requirements. The gentleman who asked about our application, unfortunately, that's, that's not right. We are, there's two areas that you can get TIF. You can get TIF in what's called a, this is by state statute, blighted and substandard, and extremely blighted and substandard. We are not located within a extremely blighted and substandard district. What does that mean? We are just a blighted and substandard. What does that mean? If you're extreme, the new state statute says you can get 20 years' worth of TIF. If you're in a regular blighted and substandard, you can get 15 years' worth of TIF. So therefore, Mr. Seton correctly represented it in the recommendation report, which is we are not located within a urban redevelopment area, and therefore, we are not extremely blighted and substandard. We are located in what's called the community redevelopment area, the CRA, and that is why we are blighted and substandard. So, Mr. Seton and the planning department's recommendation to you all was absolutely spot-on. Number two, zoning. We, we're already fully zoned. This was rezoned two or three years ago. There are no hotels on this lot. This is restaurants. So, might be some confusion there. No hotels. Again, Mr. Seton's report to you all was correct. We are doing restaurants here, which is where the 45 new jobs are coming from. Property tax benefit, I, I just went through that. The developer pays the property taxes. Nobody else pays the property taxes. When TIF pays off, which traditionally pays off, we can get 15 years, traditionally in this, in this city, those pay off 10 to 15 years, that new increase goes back to our city, which benefits all of us. That's the long-term view on why TIF is a good thing, because we're, the city is, by state statute, is investing in future development within our city. It's not about just right now, it's about 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And in a development like this, that's extremely important because that's such a big corridor to our city with, with travel and that sort of thing. I, I made a note, taxpayer resources, and there was a failure. Again, I, I don't know what that is. I mean, this, there's no other tax money coming into our development. It's just the developer paying the tax resource, or paying the property taxes. So, sorry, I'm a little long-winded. I, I'm up here a lot doing these deals, and I hear these questions, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to be really clear. No one pays property taxes on TIF deals other than one individual or one entity, and that is the developer. There is no hiding of money, there's nothing going on in these deals. It's completely compliant to state statute, and we have a lot of smart people in our planning department who check every single application that our clients and everyone else that comes and does TIF deals to ensure that everyone is following state law. So, hopefully, I addressed all those questions. If not, I'm happy to come back up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Seton, did you want to address, I think they were your emails, if you'd like to address those briefly?
Yeah, I think Brent really covered things pretty well. I don't have an awful lot to add. I would note that, and I'd like to reemphasize, that there's a big difference between a CRA and an EBA. A CRA is a community redevelopment area, and we cannot even review a project for TIF unless it's located within a designated community redevelopment area. And you folks on the council designate those areas, we have a map. There's been an additional layer. If you're already a CRA, you may also qualify for an EBA designation that's extremely blighted, and then your TIF can be up to 20 years rather than 15 years. So, there has been no change from one memo to the other that it was CRA versus, they're two separate items, and we need to keep that straight. I think that's important. I think the concept of, that we, we hear about frequently, about other neighbors paying for the TIF or paying more in taxes, is based on a misconception. You have a property that's not worth an awful lot, it's paying taxes now, or taxes are being paid on it. Those taxes must continue to be paid at that rate. There can be no reduction, or you're in violation of state law. TIF projects cannot reduce that existing payment. Now, they build a TIF project, the value goes way up. You have taxes on the new valuation, those taxes go back into the project for a period of 15 years. Okay? So, it's a deferred, deferred gift to the city of 15 years. But the concept I'm hearing is that if that tax money, let's say it's $500,000, goes back into the project, well gee, there's a $500,000 hole in the city's budget we need to fill. That's not true. If the project never got developed, would you have a $500,000 hole then? You'd have the same amount of money. It doesn't cost the neighboring taxpayers, at least not in that, that manner. I think that covers it pretty well for now. I'm available, excuse me, I'm available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public meeting. Councilman Begley, I think you're first.
Thanks. Madam President, Brent, you covered everything, I think, that I wanted to ask you, and Don did. Don, a quick question. Can you just describe briefly the process of the TIF Committee, how that works, when it gets to you?
The entire approval process for TIF?
Just in general, generalality.
Okay, we get the TIF application at a staff level, and we review it for completeness, and to see if, if the financial structure of the deal makes sense. We review it to see if it complies with zoning laws or long-range master plan, all that. Really, the review between the application being received and going to the TIF Committee is probably the highest hurdle, because we vet the projects very rigorously. It's difficult to get to the TIF Committee. Once you get there, things start to flow a little bit smoother, because we've ironed out the glitches at a staff level. But anyway, staff review, then a TIF Committee review, that's mainly city department heads, then it goes to the planning board for review, and then it comes to you folks for your review and approval. And that's the TIF project plan. Then there's a contract, an agreement, that comes to you as a separate item following the project plan a few weeks later. So, it's a long process with lots of opportunity for public input.
Thanks, Don. Mr. Kuzzi, can I ask you a quick question?
Matt Kuzzi, Law Department.
Matt, when this TIF application process goes through, does city law look at it?
Yes, a lot of departments involved in the TIF Committee and reviews it when they sign in and submit it to the council.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fanslaw, can I ask you a quick question, please?
Absolutely. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Dave, does the City Planning Department review these TIF applications for projects such as MH Landing?
Yeah, that, the projects come to us way before probably even Don and Bridget see them, so, most of the projects that come before Planning Board and City Council are the result of a pre-application meeting, where we talk about all sorts of things, all the entire, the entire entitlement process, which can include TIF financing if that's what the applicant is seeking. So, we usually produce a pre-application letter back to that person who's met with city staff, and then they are free to make applications for all sorts of entitlement processes, one of them being TIF. And then Don explained the process once the TIF application comes to staff. They will formulate a recommendation report, the nine-member TIF Committee gets together, makes a recommendation to the planning board, planning board holds their public hearing, and then those applications wind up in front of City Council.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fanslaw.
You're welcome.
I'll, it is, this resides in District 3, this project. As I drive by there over the last couple of years, seeing the progress from what it was before to where it is now in the development of this project before us today, again, it's in District 3, from commercial, multifamily housing, all the things going into that, it's great to see the development there and the jobs right off the interstate. You mentioned, Brent, the location, so I am glad to support this, and I will make a motion to support this today. Thanks, Madam President.
And thank you. And Councilman Harding, your light was on, is your light not working? Do you want to go, or, and then, and then Councilman Johnson, I'll have you, something happened that there's light.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Brent, could I have you come up for a minute? As Councilmember Begley said, a lot of these questions that I was going to ask were, you guys have answered a lot of them, but actually, I'm going to ask you one more time. Who pays the taxes and the TIF loan?
Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. The developer pays the property taxes, and then ultimately, the developer goes and takes a loan out based upon the future receivable of the TIF dollars over the 15 years, which is a risk that we don't ever talk about here, but there is a real risk and a real guarantee of that loan that they're getting from a third-party bank. I'd say 95, 96 percent of the TIF deals that I work on, that formula is followed. One out of 100, they'll just take the receivable over 15 years. But again, that's developer paying the property taxes, developer taking on the risk.
And that was one of the reasons I wanted to bring that up, because I, I don't know that we do speak enough about that, is it is the developer's risk.
100%.
And even though this isn't a hotel, which was, some might have had some confusion about that, that, and we're not, we're not here to determine whether or not it will be successful. Again, that is the developer's risk of what they, with their investment, and what they want to put on that property that's allowed by right, it's, it's their risk whether or not that that, that business or that enterprise may be successful.
100%. So, there's the capitalistic risk in that you're going to find tenants to fill your apartment, if you're doing apartment, or here, a restaurant. There's also the risk that the valuation, that you build the improvement. You have to build the improvement to create the incremental valuation that supports your TIF. And if you don't do that, the developer is on the hook to pay that difference pursuant to the terms of the redevelopment agreement that Mr. Seton just talked about.
And again, it's the developer, not the taxpayer.
That is 100%. There is a 30-page agreement that the Law Department and I negotiate, which is fair to everybody in the sense that it's pretty clear, pay your property taxes, and if you don't, you're out of the TIF program effectively.
I'll ask you one more before I have something for Mr. Seton, and then this is unfair to you, but I'm going to do it anyway.
Hey, Councilman Harding, can you move your microphone up just a little? Because we're having trouble hearing you. Thank you.
I'll ask you, what's the best time to plant a tree?
In the fall.
Well, 20, 20 years ago.
Oh, right.
The second-best time to plant a tree is today. And, and really, what we're doing is, and this, I, this is, like I said, it's unfair to do to you, but you said something that I think is very important, too, is that at the end of the day, at the end of the, the TIF period, there is a huge benefit to the city of Omaha, in the sense that, that the taxes paid on that new valuation and that investment that's been made into that property benefit not only the city of Omaha, but all the other taxing entities that you, that you brought up, OPS, because this is in OPS, I believe. But it's the NRD and the Metro Community College and all, and all the other taxing authorities. All those benefit from this kind of a project.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
You didn't ask me a question. By state statute, there are TIF-eligible expenses. So, everyone thinks that developers get this money, and they put it in their pockets, and they walk off for 15 years. No. TIF-eligible expenses by state statute, not the city's, state statute says these are the eligible expenses that you can account and pay for with TIF dollars. That's what Mr. Kuzzi's office and us go through with Don and Bridget and the TIF Department. We make sure that all of the expenses, the TIF-eligible expenses that we're actually getting dollars for over the 15 years are compliant with state statute. That, so the money we get from TIF goes to pay for public improvements or other TIF-eligible expenses. It's not just going in developers' pockets. That's another misnomer that I hear a lot from doing these deals.
Another good point to bring up is, and that's, I think, again, what's missed a lot, is that the public improvements that are associated with any of these developments is a TIF-eligible expense.
Sure.
So, that's, that's kind of how we, we can make some of those off-site public improvements associated with a project like this.
100%.
Okay. Don, just one other thing, because I, I think you said it, but I want to have it said again. I think the, you know, we, sometimes I think people think these are all kind of just rubber-stamped as they, they come to us. This is actually the redevelopment plan, and there's the plan stage, and there's the agreement stage. Both the plan stage and the agreement stage go through the planning board first, and then to the City Council. But prior to that, when you, you brought up the, the TIF Committee, and that's, that's kind of the highest hurdle, the one that has to be crossed first before it gets to the planning board for the redevelopment plan, then to us for the redevelopment plan, then back to planning board for the redevelopment agreement, and then back to us for the redevelopment agreement. But that's, that's why I think it's, it's important to note that how, you know, there are a number of projects that don't cross or get over that first hurdle, and that's one of the reasons why. I can understand why some people might think that this is just kind of a rubber stamp when it gets to this point, but it's because of all the scrutiny and the analysis that's been done both at the planning department level, and then first, I'll say firstly, then in, in the approval process with the TIF Committee.
That's correct. And I, I would say that even before the TIF Committee, it's the staff review that's the highest bar.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we'll get projects that'll come in for a pre-application meeting, and, and they may have zoning problems, that, there may be other deficiencies with their, with their project that really doesn't fit well or align well with our TIF program, and we tell these people, "You can apply, but you're going to be wasting your time." apply, but you're going to be wasting your time and money, because we're not going to support this. It doesn't fit the TIF criteria, TIF program criteria. So we do vet these pretty closely. There is one thing you mentioned that's not quite correct, we don't have the TIF agreement go to the Planning Board. It goes straight from law to the City Council. But the project plan...
I apologize.
The project plan does go through the entire process.
If there's any zoning or anything associated with that...
Correct, correct.
Yes, thank you for that question.
If I may go on a little bit...
Yeah, please.
In terms of the transparency that we've been asked to provide, I would note that this Cocoa Keys development site, if it had not been in a CRA, it might still be sitting there. It still may be home to urban campers, and a problem for the neighborhood. I would note that blight is not always entirely visual, it's based in part on the demographics of the people that live in the area, the average unemployment rate, and per capita income. So when you say it doesn't look blighted, that can sometimes be deceiving, and in terms of the built environment, sometimes the buildings are fine, but the infrastructure's a little old. And TIF projects pay for public improvement, so they help upgrade our infrastructure. I have some other thoughts, but that's probably enough for now.
Okay. And then I was going to say, too, when Mr. Beller was, I think that was the point why Mr. Beller was showing the other projects within the area, immediate area of the former, I'll say, campus, why TIF has been such an important tool for that reinvestment in that area, because as you just said, but for TIF, this could be sitting and languishing, and is a very important corridor, as was pointed out, 72nd and I-80. I mean, before we had CHI Health Center and Convention Center, you know, that's where a lot of the banquets and things like that in Omaha happened. It's a very important area of our town, and to see the level of reinvestment that's going into this, because of the ability to use TIF, I think is something that should be applauded.
Couple more points, real briefly. One is that, gee, would this site have developed without TIF? In a lot of cases, the answer is, well, yeah, maybe. Maybe the site would have developed without the TIF program, but what would have developed there? It might have been something about half of the intensity that we're getting now. And in terms of the school district, it's kind of a deferred gratification-type thing, getting that tax money 15 years later. But we don't have complaints from the school district. And when we do new CRA designations, EBA designations, we send notice to the school district that's involved, and they have an opportunity to reach out and say, hey, we don't like this. But they understand deferred gratification, just like the city does, and they're on board with TIF.
It's like my tree.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. There's no doubt that this tool that we have called TIF is very impactful in areas in the eastern part of the city. There's no doubt that this tool is very impactful. However, with any question or any dispute, there are two sides to every story. So we've heard the side of the city, and we've heard the side of the developer. However, we weekly get the same question from the community in which the TIF development is being utilized to make a difference, to make the impact. So we have not addressed the question that the community has asked for as why it is impactful. Okay? So we've told the story from the developer's point, and we've told the story from the city's point, but as far as the individuals that reside in the area where it has been blighted, and extremely blighted, from their perspective, they are still not getting it. They're not understanding the benefits. So if I am to be helped as a constituent, and I still don't get it, it doesn't matter how many times you tell me the same story, I'm still not going to get it, because you haven't explained it in a manner in which I can resonate or understand it. Basic form of communication, right? I mean, that's the way communication is done, all the time. So we're dealing with this answer over and over again, even although we have a beautiful slide here, but it's not addressing the customer. The customer, which is Larry and others, that continue to come up and ask this question, they're still confused. So if we really want to attack this, we really want to address this, then we would put those individuals that still have the question every day in the room and ask what it is that they're looking for, for explanation as to how this tool is helping them. That's true change, that's true communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to extend a little bit of grace to Mr. Adams on the confusion of the hotel. The owner of MH Landing is Dan Merrick, who has been here before, and he is, or has been, a hotel developer in the past, and may still be. And so I think that may be where the confusion came, and so I wanted to make that clear. I could understand where that was coming from. And I wanted to talk a little bit about constituents that talked to me about concerns that Councilmember Johnson is bringing up, and I think one of the things that the biggest misunderstanding is that I hear, is that if we do the TIF, and we increase the value of the project that we're looking at today, that there's, in some way, that the neighbors within a three-block area, six-block area, I don't know how big of an area that they are thinking, that their property values are going to automatically be increased because of that. I think my response has always been that that's a specious argument, because you're not comparing apples to apples. I mean, you can't compare valuations of commercial property to valuations of residential property, in my view. If the area is going to increase, and be beautiful, and be, you know, there's going to be new restaurants, there's going to be new daycare centers, there's going to be new hotels or whatever on that block, and that makes it more desirable for your neighborhood, and more desirable and easier to sell your property at a higher price, I'm guessing the assessor's probably going to raise the valuation at some point, because of comparable sales in that neighborhood. But it's not as a direct result of the project going forward. I think we all appreciate the beautiful projects, we appreciate the CHI Center, we appreciate the other places that have been deemed to be blighted and extremely blighted, and have been improved, and are now a benefit to all of us. But I think that's where some of the confusion comes, and I try to explain it that way, and I may be completely wrong, but that's where I think that's where a lot of it comes from.
Thank you. I see no further lights, so I just wanted to make a comment. I'm sorry, this is my time to make a comment. So I want to thank Bridget Hadley, and by the way, if anyone doesn't understand the TIF slideshow, that is available on the City Planning website, you can go to TIF, and it explains how tax increment financing works. And also, I know that Don Seaton and Bridget Hadley have always made themselves available. You can call the Planning Department, you can schedule a time to talk with them, to meet with them. About 10 years ago, I think I spent about two and a half hours in Bridget's office, and she explained exactly how it worked, because I think it can be very complicated. And she answered all my questions, and then I think I still came back and asked her more questions, even after that. But I think that our planning staff, and the people that do this, actually are very, not only are they very knowledgeable about the projects, and what should be approved and shouldn't be approved, but they're also willing to answer any questions for any member of the public of the city of Omaha. I think all of us up here are willing to answer any question as well, it's just I always like to bring an expert in the room with me, just to make sure I'm explaining it correctly, and Bridget has provided that information to help me do that. Also, I just want to say, Mr. Beller, that I think you did explain how impactful these projects are. And just the last one that we looked at at 19, how impactful that's going to be for the 30th Street corridor. Here, in District 4, this is a very blighted area, again, that needs to be developed, and I liked what Mr. Seaton had said, maybe there'd be a development here without TIF, but maybe it'd be much smaller. Maybe we would just see a fast-food restaurant go in, instead of a nicer restaurant that would have more jobs. So we don't necessarily know what kind of development would be there, but I think we're getting better development as a result of this. And in addition, when it comes to kind of the comparable sales, the assessor can only compare residential homes to other residential homes for purposes of valuing the property. So if a commercial property kind of gets built, that's not necessarily going to increase the value of your house, unless the houses around you are selling for more, so that's not going to increase the taxes either. So I appreciate kind of the explanation, but if somebody doesn't understand the slides, I think that Bridget Hadley made very kind of easy with bullet points to read, she is more than willing to meet with anyone and have that conversation, and I do appreciate that, Ms. Hadley. And I note, this project, the public improvements that are being paid for with, because I think the TIF on this is only $581,000, and it looks like the majority of that is going to the sewers, storm and drainage sewers, paving and curb improvements, and utilities, which will end up benefiting a lot, at least those are the public improvements that I see here in this. So it's definitely benefiting more than just the developer in this case. So with that, I think, was there, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. You reminded me, I see Bridget is here, and I just wanted to ask Bridget if she had anything to add, if there was anything that was missed, if you have any comments that you wanted to make, you're one of the experts in the room as well, and I wanted to give you an opportunity.
Sure.
No, I was, Bridget, I was Bridget.
All right. Thank you. Let the record reflect, she shook her head no. Everything was set, correct? All right. All right. Now, lights, I think, was there a motion? And a second? All right, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President. Sorry, five to zero. Yeah, sorry.
It's a little confusing today.
Habit.
Habit.
Item 21, resolution to approve the Boho Flats Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1432 South 13th Street, in an amount up to $2,090,443.
I'm sorry, I forgot that I'm running the meeting. Well, open the public meeting for agenda, item 21.
Okay, wait until I call, Don.
Proponents.
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, good afternoon. Once again, the Boho Flats TIF project is located along South 13th Street, just north of Pine Street, in the Little Bohemia area. The project site is comprised of three parcels, that contain six buildings, they're small buildings, some of them are older, single-family homes, or they were originally single-family homes. The site will be cleared, and a new five-story mixed-use building will be constructed. There will be about 5,400 square feet of first-floor retail uses, along with 59 market-rate apartments on the upper floors. Project will have a total of 44 parking stalls, 38 of which are on-site, six which are on the street adjacent to the project. The developer is Boho Flats LLC, managed by Colin Brown of Sage Capital. The project investment in the area of Little Bohemia is about $15.3 million. The TIF support for the project is $2,090,443. And again, this has been reviewed by the TIF committee and the Planning Board, approved by both. It's appropriate land use for the area, and complies with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Brent Beller, 11440 West Center Road. On behalf of the applicant, with me today is Aaron, and Colin with Sage Capital. Thanks, Don, not too much to add. I do want to touch on the benefit for a project like this. So one of the benefit is increased density. Our city's master plan wants urban infill by, you know, there used to be three residents here, now we're upwards of 51 market-rate apartments down here. So complying with the goals of the master plan is another utilization of TIF, and that's one reason why we do these projects. The other benefit is more jobs. So we're going to have four bays on the bottom floor here. I can say this, I don't think I'm young anymore, but it's hip and cool to be down in Little Bohemia, and it's a new place to be and go and eat dinner. Sage Capital is investing in more of those types of retail and restaurant opportunities down here, which obviously generates sales tax, and obviously gives people in our city and that live down here another place to go. So the walkability, you know, the Dundees and the Bensons and the Florents and all those areas are great, Little Bohemia is the next one coming up, and so a project like this kind of spearheads that sort of incentive, and TIF really helps to make the goal of the master plan, which is urban density, come to fruition here. So I don't think I have anything else. This was in front of you a couple of weeks ago for its zoning and its PUR for the height and the sidewalk, so I won't touch on any of that, but I am here for any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? These are proponents.
And for a penny, and for a pound. Andrew Adams, 2301 South 33rd Street. I'd like to open my remarks by saying a thank you to Colin Brown with Sage Capital. Colin was kind enough to take a few minutes out of his day, actually more than a few minutes out of his day, to talk with me about the goals of this project. We talked about a number of different things, from the spruce trees on 13th Street, the rent that's anticipated, the Brick Road on Pine Street, which is in desperate need of some public works attention. I left the conversation thinking that Colin and his team will be good stewards, I know they'll protect the interests of the community, and I hope the team continues to look for more opportunities in the area, particularly South Martha Street. So I am a proponent and enthusiastic supporter. I believe 13th Street is one of the most underutilized corridors in our city. It's also a location near and dear to my heart. My Bohemian great-grandparents would only eat at one restaurant in the city, and that was the Bohemian Cafe, I had many meals there. So Colin, if you need any help with Bohemian decor, I'm happy to help. When we have the opportunity to take these general industrial districts and rezone them into neighborhood business districts, I think these are the items that need to be celebrated the most. This area has needed these investments for more than a generation, and it is great to finally see them arrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that would like to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm not opposed to progress. What I am opposed to is progress in the name of community partners. Your flowcharts on the presentation that you have on the table outside for a chance trying to explain TIF to the average citizen, there's still a problem. You need to explain to us how, if the developer gets today's value on property tax value and assessment for 15 to 20 years, how is it that he pays the taxes and the taxpayers that live in the area don't? That doesn't figure. The school board complains about losing revenue, because you maybe blighted the area and reduced the property value at that time, and the school board complains about it. Oh, we're not going to get the money for that for 15 or 25 years. Even Doug Kagan pointed that out in one of his papers. That's not been reviewed. Okay. Okay, the next point is you show a money bag on these, on your handout, you show a money bag, but you don't say who that bag full of money goes to. The taxpayer's not referenced anywhere here. Yes, maybe my value of my house goes up because you're going to soon develop Saddle Creek Road and North Country Club Avenue. Now, you said a few minutes ago that because it's a commercial building, it doesn't affect the value of my property. That you don't expect the taxpayer to believe that, do you? You will raise the values of my house property taxes in order to help pay for it, and you're not admitting it. Because who's making it up for the 15 or 25 years? And you're going to catch up all of a sudden in one day in 15 or 25 years and satisfy the school board then? Of course not. The school board starts raising it to us all along because they lost that money. That's how the taxpayers end up paying the bill. But we all want to blame somebody else, don't we? Pass it on to somebody else. You're still not transparent enough. And Juanita, thank you very much. You raised some pretty good issues. Common sense is not very often debated in these chambers. And I don't mind being made a fool of if I'm wrong. I might learn something. But I don't want to be called a fool and unknowledgeable, and you don't like me when you don't prove me wrong. And Mr. Harding this morning objects to my shirt. I don't object to my shirt. I have a little Indian blood in me.
We're going to stick to the topic if you want to talk about this Agenda item.
Thank you. I'm out of order, yes.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting, and Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. I will make a motion to support this today. I know Brent mentioned a couple of weeks ago we dealt with some parking issues that are always complex, and when the price of progress is moving forward, you try to address those, and I had conversation with the BID folks who are in support of this. I even got a couple of calls from some elected officials that thought it was referenced in Little Bohemia, the great progress that is being made down there. If you want to go eat, you can go to Muchachos. We approved the liquor license for them a few weeks ago. Great place to get something to eat. You can go to Fizzy's, Beercade. Parking's a little tough, but those are challenges we'll deal with. The units here is going to be great for a thriving community. And I think it was about a year ago we formed the Business Improvement District, and there's a lot of great folks down there stepping up, wanting to do all the things we talked about, which is build a great community for even young hipsters like you, Brent, that I get down there on occasion, and I know I'm not a young hipster, but I enjoy spending time down there. It's a thriving community. So I'm glad to make a motion, Madam President, to support this item today. Thank you.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, and there's no lights. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Consent Agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 22 through 32 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Hi, good afternoon. Kalen Daly-Dehlias, the Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department. On item number 31, that represents funding from the EEOC to the Human Rights and Relations Department for the services that we perform, the Human Rights and Relations Department, over the last year. So from October 1st, 2022, through September 30th of 2023. And so we're simply asking the City Council to approve that money coming in to compensate for 20 completed investigations and a number of outreach and engagement events. I'll be here for any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Items 22 through 32?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm opposed to 31, 34, possibly 36.
We're only on 22 through 32.
Through 32, okay.
Yes.
On number 31. I'm sorry to sound like a fool again, but I thought we solved the human rights issues with an expensive employee that writes in the CRT language and tries to educate us on equal opportunity. I remember many, 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 many years ago, equal opportunity. And US West started a program on diversity and sensitivity training, and it's been going on for a heck of a lot of years, and we still haven't solved it. We have a city now that is listening to the federal government, and we apparently have lots of discrimination complaints within the city. I thought we solved that problem. But we're going to spend how much money or ask for how much money? $41,810,000? Excuse me? I don't think that's proper. Is that to settle lawsuits? And we haven't fixed the problem within the City Employment Department? I'm sorry.
Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Items 22 through 32? Seeing none, close the public hearing. No lights. All right, I'll second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 33, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to BJ's Fleet Wash LLC and the estimated annual amount of $29,456.80 for janitorial services to be utilized by the Sewer Maintenance Division.
We'll open the public meeting on Agenda Item Number 33. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public meeting.
Item 34, an ordinance to approve an amendment to an agreement with Metro Area Continuum of Care for the homeless to obligate up to 25% of the emergency rental assistance funds for affordable rental housing and eviction prevention purposes.
The public meeting on Agenda Item 34 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Greg Paschkewicz, City Planning Department. Here's a proponent on this, happy to answer any questions. Really, we're looking to make procedural adjustment to allow ERA dollars, which have really been emergency response to this point over the past two, two and a half years, to be able to take advantage of Treasury guidance that allows us to go eviction prevention route with the remaining dollars we have. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hi, my name is Karina Raffai, 4903 Underwood Avenue. So I've worked with a program that distributed the federal emergency rental assistance dollars, and I want to spend time kind of exploring that word, "emergency." When we first got access to the rental assistance funding, the emergency was related to a widespread global pandemic that impacted various communities, including low-income communities. Current community funding and the general view of COVID-19 has changed, but not for low-income communities. The emergency now transitions from a COVID-19-related emergency to a housing emergency that directly impacts low-income communities, who will continue to see the financial repercussions of COVID-19 for years to come. We spent the last seven months of ERA funding exclusively eviction court, funding exclusively available to households in eviction court, still operating under the COVID emergency framework. We continue to see a rise in evictions. The proposed framework shifts to a housing emergency framework that utilizes a proactive housing problem-solving approach where early intervention and long-term housing solutions are introduced to at-risk households before it gets to a point of emergency. Initial ERA funding was meant to serve as a Band-Aid. We were in the middle of a global pandemic. ERA II funding provides us with the opportunity to create a sustainable, long-term program. It's also important to consider the federal FAQs for ERA funding, which I have spent a lot of time with over the course of the past three years. And ERA I funding was created as an emergency response to the global pandemic, where ERA II funding took into consideration the emergency response, but also sought to create a sustainable mindset, which is what the shift with ERA funding here seeks to do. We're moving from a reactive approach in eviction court to a more proactive and sustainable model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents?
Erin Feigstinger, 1111 North 13th Street. I am too short once again for this podium. Since this essentially marks the close of one era of our highly successful Emergency Rental Assistance Program, I wanted to first offer my sincere thanks to all of you and also to the Mayor's Office for running the program so smoothly and efficiently these last few years. I know that Omaha's program was a model for other granting jurisdictions, and what we were all able to accomplish together to advance housing stability and prevent homelessness in the midst of that crisis should be a source of tremendous pride for this city, honestly. Given that this Agenda Item will shift the remaining funding, I would urge this Council to also build on the successes of that direct assistance aspect of the ERA program in the following ways, and move forward intentionally with the understanding that we will not simply build our way out of the affordable housing crisis. Investments in the physical infrastructure of housing are absolutely critical and appreciated, and they should be matched by an investment in the people who are impacted by our housing crisis. So one, and I know that this is completely unrealistic at this moment, just want to put it in your brains, the idea of a permanent ERA fund, there is a benefit to this. We should explore a permanent fund for this purpose. The ERA program, for instance, served over 15,000 households in Omaha, unique households with assistance since 2021. And there were only 8,000, around 8,500 evictions filed in that same time period. So what this tells me is that there are households in Omaha who, for some reason or another, just needed a little help to get by. And I think that that's going to continue even past the COVID-19 crisis, as Karina mentioned, particularly for our lowest-income families in Omaha. Social service organizations move heaven and earth every single day to help these folks who just need a little bit of help. But their ability to do that is limited by the sources of funding for this purpose. And we have very little assistance left in this community right now as we head into the second half of the year. We're talking Thanksgivings, Christmas, all of those things that really put a strain on household budgets. The ERA program provided much broader flexibility than our typical program requirements for a social service agency, and it allowed us to maintain housing stability through the worst of the economic crisis associated with COVID-19. There's still a crisis, as you well know. We just spent a bunch of time talking about TIF. We talk about affordable housing all the time. And a permanent emergency rental assistance fund, supported financially by the city and supplemented by private funding, much like you did with Front Porch Investments with affordable housing investment, would go a long way to preventing future housing instability and homelessness for all of our neighbors. Currently, Omaha invests very little for this purpose. The majority of funding going to support programs is pass-through funding from the federal government or state government. And I understand there's not much stomach for this right now, so I would say at the very least, maybe explore a permanent emergency rental assistance fund to help those tenants who are dislocated when the city has to come in and evacuate units. That's a huge drain. Obviously, every agency engaged in that is more than happy to do that work and will do it long past the news forgets about it, long past people stop donating to the cause. They're going to keep doing it. So for instance, the FLORA costs about $10,000 a week. That's money that we can't spend on other folks because we, you know, are going to move heaven and earth to help those people who are dislocated. Same with Legacy Crossing, took over $150,000 out of ERA and hundreds of thousands of dollars more out of the private funding to help those tenants who had to find a new place to live. I would also encourage you to continue to invest in legal support for tenants in eviction court in the ways that you can. Both Councilmembers Melton and Rowe have visited eviction court. Well, you've worked in it. Don just sat with me, but that was valuable too. But you know the value that that service provides and that folks are doing. And then four, I would just highlight that we are on track to surpass our average pre-COVID eviction filings this year. So on average, Douglas County is about 3, 3,200 eviction filings. We're past that at this point in the year in 2023. One trend that we have seen in eviction filings since 2020 is the increase in filings from out-of-state investors who come in, buy up those large apartment complexes, and don't have a lot of community engagement responsibility, don't feel that kind of community pressure to explore alternate options. So in those top 10 of eviction filers, before COVID, you had your local companies. Since COVID, we've seen more of our out-of-state investors going in on that. So I anticipate, and I know that we will make some positive steps forwards on at least some of these goals through the Housing Affordability Action Plan Implementation Process, but I just wanted to take the opportunity of a public hearing to, one, thank you for your continued engagement on emergency rental assistance, trusting the community to do the right thing with that, with that fund, with those funding sources. And I would just encourage you to think very clear, you know, intentionally about how we need a balance of not just, you know, investing in the physical infrastructure, but also the human infrastructure. And I know I went overtime. I apologize. But you don't have lights, so.
I wasn't doing time today.
Yeah, well, good.
Had I known that maybe you were going to go on that long, maybe I wouldn't have.
Yeah.
No, it's great information.
Well, I've got a couple more pages if you'd like.
It's great information. I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work you do.
So if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
All right.
Are there other proponents?
Good afternoon. Jason Feldhaus, Executive Director of MATCH, 6101 Dodge Street, 68182. I wanted to just kind of dovetail off what Erin was talking about in the public-private partnership. First off, I want to thank the City Council for the trust and the partnership that you have in MATCH. On behalf of myself and the board, we really appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with the city. City planning has been an amazing partner through this whole process, from development to execution. And then obviously, our staff have done a great job of delivering a quality program. I think there was an important part there that Erin was kind of talking through with you guys, and I'd also like to continue to kind of put the bug in the ear of the City Council, and that is MATCH also works with our philanthropic community to secure about $1.6 million in private dollars every year, annually, to address housing sustainability. But long-term, we're going to need a public-private partnership to kind of make sure that we can develop processes, strategies, and outcomes that will be effective post ERA. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with our generous philanthropic community, invest dollars in the right areas, make sure that we see housing sustainability, both from the government side with U.S. Treasury dollars and the private funds. Give us that flexibility to go across a litany of issues that families face. But long-term, we don't have that option moving forward. So I just wanted to kind of dovetail off what she said and really push forward the idea that MATCH is committed to that public-private partnership long-term, securing the dollars from the private entities, but also looking at a long-term partnership with the city. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other proponents?
Hello. Yes, Alicia Christensen with Together up Omaha 812 South 24th Street. And Councilmember, I said Congresswoman. Bagley, you've been to eviction court too as well, so I called you in there to bear witness to how things work in there. But I wanted to take this opportunity to also thank the city and the City Council for, you know, supporting us in this resounding success for Omaha's Emergency Rental Assistance Program. That brought together the city, community organizations, landlords, the courts, volunteer attorneys, legal services, and tenants to avoid housing instability and an eviction crisis that could have exacerbated, really, a public health crisis and the economic fallout from the pandemic. So over the course of the ERA program, there's approximately 85 eviction cases scheduled for a hearing each week. And we've been able to help thousands of Omaha families stay in their homes and provide the financial stability that landlords and property owners needed throughout the pandemic. and provide the financial stability that landlords and property owners needed throughout the pandemic. So, this response has demonstrated again and again the efficacy of this collaborative action and the collective benefit that we all enjoy when our neighbors and community has housing stability. This remains true even as the pandemic-related issues recede and others arise. So, as housing crises rise faster than income and earnings, many families still face losing their homes. And with that, so many important other things: consistent school attendance, a steady job, continuous attention to health, a sense of safety and community. Clearly, throughout ERA, it's demonstrated that Omaha recognizes that housing stability is connected to these educational, employment, health, and public safety outcomes that are essential to what makes a city a good place to live. So, Together is very proud to have worked with the city and all of our community partners and encourage you, as echoing those who've gone before me, your continued support. We want your continued support for long-term housing stability efforts that benefit us all, really. It's not just the individuals who we're providing those direct assistance to. It's our entire community and making our city a really great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. No lights?
Item 35, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for West Dodge Station. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public meeting, our public hearing on Agenda Item 35 is today. Are there any proponents? Are there, seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 36, an ordinance to approve the Highlander 5 Davis Ridge Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Agreement.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 36 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hi, Bill Lucash, 903 South 184th Avenue Circle, Brentor Development, here to answer questions about this. It was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, I believe, so we have talked about it, but I'm happy to talk about it again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Agenda Item 36, seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing no opponents, public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled "Pavement Marking Technician." Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 37 is today. Are there any proponents?
Deb Sander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chelsea Ship, also with Human Resources, also here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents for Agenda Item 37? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Item 38, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the salary for the maintenance repairer. One Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 38 is today. Are there any proponents?
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here for questions.
Thank you.
Deb Sander from City Human Resources, here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, Items 39 through 61, do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:33.